Okay, go ahead. Go. Charlie, you can start.
All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Everybody will stand up, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barbara, would you do the roll call?
Charles Fisher?
Here.
Chuck Lewis?
Here.
Cindy Charney? Cindy Charney?
Here.
Joe Shaw?
Here.
Greg Trader?
Here.
Alex Rodriguez?
Here.
Mike Pierce?
Yeah.
And myself, Barb Kelly, you're all here.
Okay, great. Well, welcome to the first meeting for 2000, 20,021 here. Here we go. Uh, two new members. Let's start with, uh, roughly, I mean, Cindy Charney. Welcome. This is your first, uh, first full official meeting. All right, and Cindy is here in place, placing our former chair of a year, I guess, a year ago, which was Jim Renner. And we also have Joe Shaw. And Joe Shaw is replacing Adrian.
Not yet.
Welcome, Joe. I'm glad you guys are here. We've got a full house. We should have a good time and, uh, and take care and do some good business for the township this year.
Thank you.
First order of business today is, uh, as it is every year with the planning commission, the first order of business for the first meeting is to nominate officers. So do I hear any nominations, let's say, for chair of the commission?
Uh, nominate Charles Fisher for chair.
Are there any other, are there any other nominations? Not hearing any, uh, do you hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I don't know, Mike, if we have to do that by roll call. It sounds unanimous.
No, you're good.
Okay. And the second position, which I am vacating officially, is the vice chair. And, uh, I'd like to open that up by nominating, uh, Chuck Lewis. Chuck, would you be willing to serve if, uh, if you were nominated?
Sure.
Okay, it's always nice to know. Do we hear a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. Hearing a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Sounds unanimous, so, uh, welcome aboard Chuck as vice chair.
Thanks.
I will not be here for the next 11 meetings. All right. Well, thank you, guys, and, uh, hopefully we'll do good, we'll do good business this year and we'll try to do you proud. With that, let's turn to, uh, our first order of business, which is the property at 5410 Chichester Avenue.
Charlie, do you want it to approve the minute? You want approval of the minutes?
If we have them, let's approve them. All right, we have approval of the minutes, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I guess nobody wants to, uh...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Last second.
All right, we have, um, approval on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Thank you, everyone. And now we can move to 5410 Chichester Avenue. And Alex, if you would, I would, uh, like you to, uh, introduce our developer and, uh, we can proceed from there.
Hello, everybody. Um, we're at 5410 Chichester Avenue, uh, project. It's a, uh, a small lot line adjustment that is being proposed, and, uh, Matt Hoopman should be the, um, applicant's engineer that will make his, uh, presentation of, uh, what they're proposing on that lot line adjustment.
Welcome, Matt.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I guess, um, okay, I guess the plan is going to come up now.
Excuse me? 5410. Chichester.
Okay, um...
Give it to Matt, Matt Hoopman.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Again, my name is Matthew Hoopman for the new members. Uh, I am a professional engineer, registered in the state of Pennsylvania and president of the firm of G D Hoopman and Son in media. And, uh, we were retained by Mr. Claycombe to prepare these plans, which are in front of the planning commission tonight. Uh, there are two properties involved. Uh, one, um, the name on the plan would be the subdivider, which is James and Carolyn Mitchell, uh, which reside at 5410 Chichester Avenue. And, um, that, this is their dwelling right here. If that comes up. All right, let me see here. Well, the pen doesn't seem to be working, but the cursor is. And then, um, Roger and, uh, Carmella Claycombe, which reside at 5400 Chichester Avenue, which is this residence, which I'm circling up, at this location. The properties are located on the westerly side of Chichester Avenue between Fury Drive and Chelsea Road. The Mitchells own approximately 2.5 acres of land. And let me try this one more time. There we go. Let me see if this goes around here. Oops, I did that wrong. Please let me do that again. So what I've roughly highlighted here is the Mitchell property. And as you can see, uh, it's a very deep property, and it also goes in back of the Claycombe residence. And the Claycombs, uh, presently own, uh, this property right here. And it is approximately, um, a half acre in size. The properties are zoned R1. And, uh, what is being proposed is the Claycombs have offered to purchase, and the Mitchells have agreed to sell what is shown as parcel A on the plan, which is that part of the Mitchell property, which presently exists behind the Claycombe lot. Uh, the parcel A, which was just outlined, is about 2/3 of an acre of ground. So after the conveyance would take place, if this is approved, the Mitchells would be left with 1.85 acres of land, and the Claycombs, uh, 1.24 acres of land, of land. And, uh, really, it's just a lot line change. There's no new lots being created. There's no proposed construction of any kind. Merely, it's the, um, desire that the Claycombs own some property back, uh, behind their existing lot. We have already received an initial review from the township engineer. We subsequently updated the plan and then, uh, resubmitted and received a, a follow-up review associated with this application, and I believe shown on the plan are four waiver requests. Uh, the waivers include locating utilities 200 feet outside the boundary of these properties. Uh, a waiver to, uh, not to have to provide the topographic information or the contour information for the properties. A waiver that we do not need to delineate wetlands. Uh, there is a stream located toward the rear of the property. And I am sure there are some wetlands associated with that stream on either side. But they would be, I believe, in, um, a far distance from either of the two dwellings. And, um, we've added, uh, after the review of, the initial review of the township engineer, we added a note on the plan, uh, which basically alerts the property owner, uh, that there is a stream, that there are associated wetlands with the stream, and that before there's any land disturbance on any of the two lots, the wetlands would need to be delineated and shown on any plan which is provided to the township uh, for approval, whether it's a grading permit plan for, you know, for whatever reason. And lastly, the last waiver would be for setting monuments around the complete perimeter of the tract. Uh, in the last review issued by the township engineer, they've requested that we install two monuments at either side of the right-of-way of Chichester Avenue around the, um, uh, the property frontage, and the applicant has agreed to do that. So I guess that's now a partial waiver since we're installing uh, some of the monuments, but not all of the monuments around the property. So again, there's no intent here other than the Claycombs' desire to own property behind their house, for the purposes to have more property, number one, and to, um, to enjoy some land back behind their house since the lots in this area are, are all larger than the Claycombs, and by getting parcel A, they have, um, more land to just to, just to enjoy. So that, um, that wraps up a brief summary. Uh, again, the follow-up review by the township engineer dated January 14th, 2021. Besides comments on the waivers, the only, um, other comment is to either install the monuments or to post an escrow of $500 for the installation of the monuments. Uh, and the applicant would choose just to have those monuments set before we submit plans for signatures, uh, for recording. So Alex, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that wraps up the summary, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the planning commission may have.
Uh, the only thing I'll, the only thing I'll just explain further for the planning commission that we did, we did basically, uh, recommend an acceptable, uh, plan revision that they did. Uh, since it was just a minor lot line adjustment, we didn't want to hold it up for another meeting just to, um, get this review out, so we, so we, uh, helped expedite, uh, with Matt's, uh, quick progress in making the minor tweaks that we've requested. And just so that you know, that the, the reason behind the requirement of them being aware about the wetland delineation is because if, as Matt said, if they do some construction in the future, there are riparian buffers that they have to stay outside of. So the purpose of that is to make sure that they're aware of, um, uh, finding what that, uh, riparian buffer limitation is. So other than that, we felt, we felt that all the waiver requests were, were very, uh, reasonable, and we did not have any, uh, concerns with that, so. Give it back to you, Charles.
All right.
Hey, Alex.
Yes.
I got a question, I got a question about something I saw on the plan. It's a 100-foot easement for sanitary sewer trunk line. Can you explain that to me?
Well, I think that, uh, when that, this plan, when this, this whole development, uh, was originally subdivided back, I, I forget if it was in the 60s or something, Matt, but they basically, I guess, were contemplating, you know, a potential sewer line. So they have this easement line already established from when the original development was set out. Um, and it pretty much, uh, almost mirrors where the stream is, and there's a, um, a riparian buffer that's established off of that stream that almost aligns with that. And then the only thing that the riparian buffer might get increased larger if the wetlands are, uh, wider than the stream banks.
Is there a waiver for the easement?
I mean, yeah, the easement is, is very clearly delineated on the plan that Matt prepared.
Yeah.
It's pre-existing, Greg.
Yeah.
Yeah, as, as Alex mentioned, I believe these lots, these lots might even go back to the 50s, Alex. I'm not sure 50s or 60s.
Very old development.
Yeah. It was all the lots, all the lots in this area which front Chichester, they're all kind of long narrow, and I think at the time there was a contemplation that a sewer trunk line might go up that stream valley. So all the lots contain that easement. Now, that trunk line was never installed, but the easement still exists. Uh, you'd have to take positive action to have the, the easement removed. Otherwise, it just rides with the title of the property, which is what's happening here.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right, are there any other questions? Let's go down the line here. Chuck?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Cindy?
Um, I do have a question, and it's for my own education. What is the purpose of, um, asking them to delineate the contour lines or for the topographical information? Why would we normally require that?
Well, uh, generally, if, you know, usually with a subdivision, there's, there's, uh, associated construction proposed. So if you have the contour lines and you're, you're performing grading of the property, you'd have existing contours and proposed contours. So that whoever looks at the plan, the planning commission can have some idea of the amount of disturbance which is going to occur on the property. Uh, it also would tell you if there's steep slopes on the property. Uh, but again, since this is just a lot line change, that there's no, uh, contemplated, uh, construction, uh, we thought it was a reasonable request to save the applicants some money, not have to go through that exercise since there's no construction proposed.
So it's just a general requirement for all subdivision plans?
Uh, well, yes, yeah, you could, um, characterize it that way also.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Cindy. Joe?
Uh, no, no questions.
Okay, Greg? Any further questions?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, so essentially then, if I want to summarize here, we had a request for, for four waivers in addition to the, uh, approval of the plan. It looks like that the engineer and, uh, and, uh, and Matt have worked this out to the satisfaction of the engineer and, uh, unless anybody has any objections, uh, let's put this up for a vote, and whether we're going to recommend this to the township or not.
Public comments? You want the public comments, um?
Yeah, that's probably a better idea.
Yes, before you have a vote, you should open up any public comments or questions.
All right, so for public comments, you can call in at, excuse me, That's 1-571-748-4021. And your passcode for getting in is 1-0-1-0-8-2-3-5-2-PAM. Passcode is, passcode is 1-0-1-0-8-2-3-5-2-PAM. Give that a, a couple of minutes to see if we have any, uh, any interest out there.
Go back there.
Barbara, is Andrew monitoring that?
Yeah, he's, one more minute.
Okay.
It's okay, good. No public comment.
Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. In favor of recommending, uh, acceptance of the, of the, uh, of the plan to the board of commissioners? Barbara, you want to call it and record it?
Charles Fisher?
Yes.
Chuck Lewis?
Yes.
Cindy Charney? Cindy Charney?
Yes.
Joe Shaw?
Yes.
Greg Trader?
Yes.
All right, well, it's, uh, 5 favorable, 0 in, uh, and a negative, and, uh, we will, Matt, we will forward a recommendation to the board.
Thank you.
And now, give you a couple of seconds to switch gears. Matt also will be representing the next property under consideration, which is 650 Cherry Tree Road.
Matt, would you mind getting your cursor and putting it up at the very top on the left and put it on the next plan? Right there. Switch it from the pen. There you go. Thank you.
Now, Matt, if you'll, uh, just for a second, just so everybody knows that this is a sketch plan that we're looking at, not a preliminary or final request. And so, uh, go ahead, you can proceed from there.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, as just mentioned, it's a sketch plan. Uh, it's just submitted, um, to the township to receive some, um, initial comment, uh, from township officials and the planning commission. Uh, so, um, you know, the first step, um, in a, uh, in a long process, and we realize that this isn't formal, nothing said here today is binding, uh, just an information gathering, um, process. And I don't know why that...
The aerial picture is up there also, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I just lost, um, for some reason. I lost the plan.
The plan is up on the screen. I see it.
Okay, I don't. Let me see how I can see it.
Barbara, I, 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 I'm not able to see anything but the, uh,
Yeah, I don't see it either.
But the attendees.
Oh, okay. Hold on one second, please.
Matt, you look like a regular DJ there with the headphones and everything.
Yeah.
Okay, basically, he's getting it up now.
Okay.
Sorry to the public and sorry to everybody. Hey, we practiced, but what can we do?
I can see it now, Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Matt, you have control.
Yeah, I, um, I mean, it's shown as like a participant, not on a full screen. Let me, um... Uh, I'm sorry, Barb, I, my school, I'm trying to, I think this afternoon, we we like, um...
I, I see it there, Matt.
Oh, down at the bar, there we go. There it is. Got it. Okay, um, don't see where I can have control of the pen. Wait a minute, maybe if I move this. Nope.
Try again.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just continue without the pen. So the, uh, the property address is 650 Cherry Tree Road. Uh, the applicant is, uh, 650 Cherry Tree LLC. And the principal of that entity is Bill Massaro, and I believe Bill is, uh, also on the video call, uh, this evening. Uh, the property is located on the southwest corner of, uh, Cotton Lane and Cherry Tree Road. Um, uh, on the screen, Cotton Lane is running at the top of the page to left to right, and then Cherry Tree Road kind of running north and south, uh, to the right. It, uh, this property actually consists of two parcels. And the, uh, property line between the two parcels runs just to the north side of this. This is an existing driveway here, and the property line is just to the north. So we have one property above it and one below. But the combination of the two properties, um, the total lot area is approximately four acres. The existing dwelling on the property favors the southwest corner uh, of the property. And there's a rather long driveway, which provides access, uh, to that dwelling from Cherry Tree Road. That driveway is about 400 feet long to get back, uh, adjacent to the house. This driveway also serves a property, a separate parcel property, which is not part of this application, 654 Cherry Tree Road. So these two existing dwellings use the common driveway out to Cherry Tree. There are two pipelines that traverse this site. Uh, one kind of traverses more or less through the center of the property. And another, excuse me, another one favors the northeast corner of the property. Uh, this lower pipeline to the south has been abandoned. Uh, and I think the pipe is in the process or has been removed. And the, uh, pipeline to the north, the applicant's in discussion with Monroe Pipeline to have that pipeline relocated. Practically, the whole site is, um, is kept in a long condition. Maybe, let's see if I can do this. We'll switch to the aerial view. And can I shrink this a little bit? Uh, yes, let's try that. Shrink it one more time. Okay, so, uh, the property, again, this is Cotton Lane up, up to the top, and here's Cherry Tree to the right-hand side. So the property goes from the corner, uh, down and then separates between the existing dwelling on our property and the one that is not, and then down this tree line. Here's that long driveway that comes up. If, if you're familiar with the site, it's got some kind of curb treatment or on either side of the driveway. And as you can see, the, by and large, the property is kept, um, in a long type condition. Uh, this, in terms of topography, uh, here's the rough contour lines through the site. And this drains, uh, from a northerly direction to the sou- southerly direction away from Cotton Lane. That's the general location of how, uh, or direction that, uh, stormwater, uh, would drain from the property. Um, the property is zoned R2 with a minimum lot area of, uh, 11,250 square feet and a minimum lot width of 75 feet. 10 lots are proposed. We have five lots, which are numbered 1 through 5, which have access uh, and frontage along Cotton Lane. We have five lots which are numbered one through five, which have access, uh, and frontage along Cotton Lane. Uh, we have one lot which would have a flag lot access. That's Lot 6, having access through a strip of ground, 25-foot wide strip of ground to Cotton Lane. We have two lots, which are Lots 8 and 9, which have frontage on Cherry Tree Lane or Cherry Tree Road, I'm sorry. Um, and then, um, two flag lots, uh, with access to Cherry Tree Road. That would be, uh, Lot 7 with a 25-foot access strip, uh, to the north of Lot, uh, 8, I guess that is, and then Lot 10, which has a 25-foot access strip to the south of, of Lot 9. Um, the existing dwelling's driveway is going to be relocated. It's going to be removed from having access to Cherry Tree. And, uh, again, an access would be, uh, is proposed to Cotton Lane. And then that access would be shared by this off-site house, uh, known as 654 Cherry Tree, um, Cherry Tree Road. Of course, all the lots would be served by public water and public sewer. There'd be on-lot stormwater management controls for all the lots. Um, and again, a sketch plan. We're just here to receive some upfront comments from the, from the township. Uh, we do have, uh, some review comments, uh, from the township engineer. Um, I don't know if we should go through those first or just entertain general questions, or how would you like me to proceed?
Uh, I'd prefer that we go through the engineer's comments because we have a couple of new people on the commission this month and, uh, for the first time. And I think they'll benefit from that type of presentation.
Okay, very good. Uh, and there's, there's uh, five comments. I'll just read them. Uh, and this is from a letter issued January 5th, uh, 2021 from Alex. Uh, item one was the existing house at 654 Cherry Tree Road is currently landlocked, and it is. This off-site property has no, uh, fee simple access to any public right-of-way. Uh, frontage for the existing house number 654 will be required since it is not a flag lot and does not have frontage onto a public street. And, um, what we have done, um, again, this 654 shares access to Cherry Tree Road with the existing dwelling on this property via this driveway. And then what is proposed is to relocate that driveway and have it come out to Cotton Lane, and we think that's a better access since this driveway to Cherry Tree, uh, existing driveway is about 400 feet long, whereas the, um, driveway, proposed driveway to Cotton Lane is only a little over 200 feet. Um, the, uh, uh, the applicant, uh, is reluctant to, you know, provide frontage for this off-site house because I, I guess what it would take would be a, a 25-foot strip by 220-foot long or 5,500 square feet of land over a tenth of an, of an acre that the applicant would actually be giving from his site to that property owner and, and, um, you know, that's, I think that's, that's kind of a, an awkward ask, um, to give land away to this property, uh, so they can have frontage. Um, you, you know, we could make the case that it's an existing non-conforming situation, this lot, again, with nothing to do with the application other than it shares the driveway. Um, that property shares a common driveway with the existing dwelling. Uh, and we propose to keep that, although we're shifting it to another location. Um, that probably is going to be an item of discussion. Um, so maybe if I can run through the other four comments, uh, real quickly and then we can maybe open it up and uh, again, I think this probably will generate more discussion than any of the other four comments. Uh, the second comment in the engineer's review.
Matt, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think I'm losing your, okay, no, your video connection just came back. Um, so for, for that concern as far as the frontage, I mean, I know you're, you're trying to uh, paint the picture about how it's, it's, you know, giving land away, but it kind of, uh, the concern also uh, covers more than just that one issue. I guess if, if you were able to, um, improve, uh, access from a fire, uh, safety standpoint, uh, reduce the, um, flag lots, uh, there's, there's a possibility of, you know, maybe it would, it looks like it might be better served to have a, uh, additional road going through here, which would be able to, uh, improve fire safety and at the same time give that, uh, landlocked property some, some frontage. So it's not just a, it, it could be, it could be a win-win for the entire, um, layout that you're trying to do. So we just wanted the, the, the members to, to understand that it's, it's not, we're not just trying to ask the property owner to, to give something away, but in, in the, um, spirit of trying to improve the layout, I think you would solve that landlocked issue possibly.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Uh, understood. Um, in terms of interjecting a, you know, a new street, a new cul-de-sac street, whether that street comes off Cherry Tree Road, maybe down the middle where that driveway was, or alternatively come off Cotton Lane, I guess, would be another alternative to put a cul-de-sac street there. Um, I mean, what that does for the applicant is, um, I'm sure there'd be a reduction in lots, um, and in, in an increase in cost. The, the cost to put in the public street and the curb and the stormwater management associated with the public street, um, it would be a, would be a considerable cost. So it's, it kind of, it kind of hurts in, in both directions. There, there's less, there's less lots. And even with the less lots, there's more improvement costs. So the property does have a good deal of frontage on Cotton Lane and Cherry Tree Road. Um, I understand what you're saying, Alex, but I think it'd be the applicant's, uh, desire to, to keep this away from being a major subdivision and keep it with just, uh, lotting out properties or new lots off the existing roadways. Um, there are some things we can do, I guess. Um, if, if fire safety is a concern, we could, we could certainly, if this is a common access common driveway, we could certainly widen it to 16 feet wide to allow for two-way traffic. Um, maybe there's some other things that we could do. But, um, again, to, to interject or propose a new street in here, um, at least on the applicant's feelings, um, doesn't make sense.
Matt, well, and how, how would it work as far as if the, um, if nine, what, does, does 911, uh, having the address of Cherry Tree Road and then you shift it over to, um, Cotton Lane, uh, you would be able to adjust the property address, I guess, so that it doesn't get confused or lost if there's an emergency for that?
No, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that, and that's a good point because it, you know, it's not, they're not like new homes. Those homes are there already with a certain address. Um, we'd have to take specific, you know, actions to make sure 911 is aware of the change uh, and to have that change reflected in their records as well as township records.
And I get, and I guess. Go ahead.
Um, you know, where you have the, uh, access, uh, for, uh, Lot 10, uh, out to Cherry Tree?
Yes, right here. Yep.
Yeah, how about extending that, uh, uh, through, uh, Lot 6 to give the existing dwelling, uh, uh, a, an access out to Cherry? Uh, and also allow emergency vehicles to, uh, to get all the way down, uh, uh, should they have to, to the existing dwelling. Uh, and also you can serve 10, well, you can service, um, Lot 6 that way.
Um, yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
The, uh, issues which I guess might come up with that is that driveway coming up and around would be coming in back of this house, which, you know, generally is not what you would like to do. Um, and then, and then we're still, I think probably some reluctance on the township's behalf is, I, I don't, I don't think generally that the township likes to have common driveways. Um, so if we did this, we'd probably still have a common driveway with Lot 10 and Lot 6. Um,
Right.
Um, for us, for us to, to propose the common driveway for the existing home uh, on the property and the one off of our property is like almost a con, I mean, they both share an access now, so we'd be kind of continuing that non-conformity, uh, moving forward, although relocating the driveway. So that's kind of where, you know, where we are coming from to, um, to substantiate why it would make some sense to keep a common driveway for those two houses.
And you're, you're proposing, uh, removing the existing driveway in lieu of, uh, a new driveway out to, um, was that Cotton? Is that the proposal?
Yeah, yep. These two, these two, the existing home on our property and the existing home, which is not on our property, would share an access out to Cotton. This driveway that's here, if it lines up properly, could serve Lot 7. So what we're showing is cross-hatched would be a portion of that driveway, which would have to be removed because this driveway would only be used for Lot 7. And this part would be serving nobody since, um,
Hey, Matt?
Yeah.
Our, our comment number two might come into play also. I mean, basically when you look at Lot 1, I mean, it looks like a much smaller building envelope compared to all the other homes there that would be, that could fit.
It, it is. Uh, and what Alex is alluding to is, is you can see on Lot 2, or all the lots, these dashed lines represent the building envelope so that the house could go, you know, anywhere inside those dashed lines. And if you look at all the different building envelopes, this one on Lot 1 is fairly narrow from front to back away from Cherry Tree Lane. And, and that, Alex, that's not so much the front yard setback. That's the setback required from the pipeline. And
35.
Right. And what, um, you know, what we're showing here is where, where we think the pipeline is going to be relocated. If it's ro- if it's located further into the site, I think this, this lot disappears. If it's located maybe right off the edge of road, or maybe even on the other side of the road, wherever the pipeline company does it, that that building envelope might, might grow and be of the same size as the rest of these lots. So I think I understand your comment. It's just, I don't, you know, we don't have, um, a definitive answer from the pipeline company yet, and that will probably very materially affect exactly what we do with that lot.
Right. It doesn't, it almost looks as if you could could afford to maybe give them that, uh, frontage, uh, only because Lot 1 looked like it was very, um, questionable, but.
Right, right. And again, I, I, I think that, you know, I'm not so sure where we're showing the relocated pipeline is actually where it's going to end up. So, you know, what happens there is, you know, we'll have to kind of wait and see, um, after further discussions with Monroe Pipeline. Uh, if we want to go through the other comments real quick and then we can circle back and, and talk more in, in general about the, about the layout overall. Uh, the third comment from Alex is to, uh, increase the radius uh, of, at the intersection between Cotton Lane and Cherry Tree right here. If you can follow the cursor uh, for, um, I think he says for school bus turning movements. Um, and again, this isn't, we, a lot of this information is taken from aerial, uh, photographs, so we're not sure how exactly why that return is. Uh, I think what we might do is put some turning templates on there, Alex, and see how it can accommodate a school bus and, and then, you know, make some assessment after that.
Okay.
Uh, the fourth comment is that the street width should be noted and that the, uh, township ordinances would require Cotton Lane to be 34-foot wide and Cherry Tree Road to be 36-foot wide. Um, and we did measure those trees, uh, the trees, the streets, uh, yesterday, Alex, and that's what they are. Uh, coincidentally, I guess Cotton Lane was built according to township specifications because it's 34-foot wide and Cherry Tree Road in this area is 36 feet wide. So those roads are already of, um, proper width.
Okay, good. All right. I was just, I was just noticing that when you labeled 15-foot, I wasn't sure if you had it on the one side, but good.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, the last comment would be that the driveways to lots 8, 9, and 10, which are 8, 9, and 10, uh, that front on the Cherry Tree should be designed to allow cars to exit in a forward direction. And, um, I think we can comply with that by putting a, you know, a very specific turnaround area for those lots, um, you know, off the driveway and maybe away from the garage that would be used not to park vehicles, but to be used as a turnaround to get, come in, you know, turn the car around and, and leave in a forward direction on a Cherry Tree, Cherry Tree, so nobody's backing out on the Cherry Tree Road.
All right. Matt, did you get the, uh, Fire Marshal's, uh,
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The Fire Marshal basically had a concern also with, uh, those back lots that are kind of like in the flag lot section and there's two existing homes in the back for fire.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and as you mentioned, Alex, I, I think in your comment, you, you both share that comment.
Um, yeah, and then it turns out the Fire Marshal also would like to see the roadway down the middle. Yeah, for, for better emergency response.
Uh, where's the, where's the nearest fire hydrant?
The Fire Mar- uh, Fire Marshal says it's at the corner of Cherry Tree and Orchard. Um, I think he said it was an excess of 800 feet, though. Eight, yeah. Uh, but I don't, you know, I, I don't, um, I don't think the applicant would have any objection to installing a fire hydrant, let's say, at the corner of Cherry Tree and, and Cotton Lane, if that's where the Fire Marshal so chooses. Um, I mean, we have, we have enough lots here to certainly, um, accommodate that, that type of improvement.
Yeah, I, I was, I would suggest that they certainly warrant, uh, uh,
So tho- those are the comments received to date. And, and again, um, as I stated earlier, I think it's the, the first, um, the first comment of Alex's letter and maybe the, the second comment of the Fire Marshal's letter about, I guess, two combined things. What, you know, this proposed combined access for the two existing dwellings and, and whether or not, um, you know, this should flip from a subdivision where lots have frontaged on existing streets to proposing it a totally new street to serve the interior of this site. And again, um, I've discussed that issue with the applicant and it, it just kind of, you know, it, it kind of pulls from our application in two direct, in two different directions. The, the public improvement costs go up considerably and a number of lots go down, uh, significantly too. So it's, you know, in those terms, it, it just doesn't make any sense to put in, uh, another public roadway.
Matt, one of the things that I looked at when I was looking at this plan was, and I, I think Greg shared my, my, my thoughts were, uh, how, how we're accessing the back lots because right now, if I'm looking at this properly, we have one existing flag lot, which is not part of the problem, pro, the, the, the plan that you're talking about. And what you're proposing is to convert the existing, uh, property, which with the lots in front of it, you're talking about converting that to a flag lot. Uh, so you'd have two flag lots, which is something the township's not that interested in, quite frankly, uh, with design going forward, to eliminate flag lots necessarily, rather than create them. Uh, frontage to streets is very important. Uh, and, and my thought, my thought is the, that center driveway, uh, seems like it would be, it, it answers everything if we could convert that into a street. I mean, everything goes away as far as flag lots, access and, and, and concerns for all the properties that are on the low side of, including the existing home, the low side of, uh, this plan.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I mean, again, it, it's economics. I understand that. And you're looking for comments. That would seem like the, the easiest solution. Uh, the, I, I guess another solution could be to, uh, all the way down at the bottom there, uh, the bottom, the, the southern part where, where the, uh, lot, what is that? I can hardly say it. 9?
9 is here.
Yeah, below line. Uh, I don't know what that width is of the property that's available for driveway or whatever right there.
That's 25 feet, yes.
It's 25 feet. Uh, now this might sound a little crazy, but we're, we're splitting lines anyway. If you were to push line 10 and 7 up to cover the existing driveway so that so that, that 7 would abut the new properties above it and just extend beyond 10 all the way up to 8. I mean, you still have that concern that you mentioned about coming in the back way. But it would, it would seem like if that could be, you know, you're talking about streets, if that could be converted to a street, you could accomplish the same thing because then everything would have frontage.
Yeah. So you're saying a public street up and, up into here?
Yeah, something like that, something, something like that.
Yeah, and when you, when you put.
Something to think about.
Yeah. The, when you, when you put the, when you put the public street in, you know, you've, you've got the 50 foot right of way and you've got the wide cartway, but you also got that big turnaround area that's got to be, you know, put somewhere. And it just, it eats up a lot of land. And, you know, I understand, I certainly understand that the preference is to have lots with full frontage and not, not interior lots. And I know we're proposing, I guess, three here, right? 7, 10, and, and 6 as flag lots.
And 654.
And, well, I mean, 654 was landlocked before and we're, you know, we certainly need, we certainly are, are committed and have to continue to provide that property access, trying to give them a little better access. But, you know, again, there's, to install a public right of way 50 feet wide with the, with the, you know, 100 foot diameter turnaround right of way at the end, just has, it just takes up a lot of land and.
Well, safety comes first, I guess.
Well, again, Matt, you talk about right of ways and not necessarily the width of the road or whatnot. The road's not going to be 50 foot wide.
No, 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 right. I guess, I guess your town, was it 34 feet for this road too? I guess it is, right? Alex?
Yeah, it's 34, but, you know, we could always consider a waiver if it helps with the safety or something, I don't know. Something to talk about, we're in a talking stages right now, so.
Right. Well, we certainly understand the planning commission's comments and, and I guess the planning commission understands, or at least, you know, can understand the applicant's point of view. We won't solve that tonight. Maybe what I'll do is I'll get with the applicant moving forward and just, you know, consider other, other layout alternatives and maybe come back before the planning commission with another sketch, you know, to, to look at the alternatives and have to go from there.
Well, I certainly appreciate you coming in with your plan and letting us know. That's a beautiful piece of property there.
Yeah, it is, it is.
And it's, you know, it looks like you might be putting it to very good use and certainly would be, I think would be great for, for the community and whatnot. So I'd like to see how, how you work through the conundrum here and see where we're going with it.
Okay.
Anybody have any more comments out there? Let's do the public comments, Barbara.
Okay, we're looking right now. You want, tell them, you want to state the day, the, the code, please? Charlie, you want to?
Little Barbara, as soon as I can get to that sheet of paper.
Want me to give it?
Yeah, I can't locate it, Barbara.
The number is 1-0-1, I'm sorry. The phone number is 1-5-7-1-7-4-8-4-0-2-1. Call in password 1-0-1-0-8-2-3-5-2-pound.
Want to repeat that, Barbara?
Call in password 1-0-1-0-8-2-3-5-2-pound.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Drew is looking now.
Matt, you did yeoman's work tonight.
Well, Barb and I had a practice session this afternoon, which was very helpful. So to the extent that this ran relatively smoothly, I think it was all as a result of Barbara's efforts.
Drew helped a lot.
And Drew, yes, I'm sorry.
The public comment is over.
Okay. All right, Matt, thank you very much. And, you know, be looking forward to you coming back with some new proposal or some additions to the current proposal.
Yes. Thank, thank you, planning commission for your time and we'll, we'll do some homework and be back in front of you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
Get back on our agenda. The next issue is just the notification that we're going to have a consideration of a plan being submitted by Wells Fargo next month. We're not discussing it, should be in your inbox if you don't have it already. Right now, I don't think, Barbara, there's nothing else been, that's popped up yet, right?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next, next item on the agenda is the heart and soul. And really, there's not much to update right now. Last month, if you recall, we talked about the value statements at the end of the meeting, explaining exactly what they were. And now what we're doing with those value statements are trying to come up with some specific themes associated with each one of the value statements and then share them with partners and interested parties in the community, basically to see how they perceive how we're doing with those value statements or what we might be able to do to enrich or improve those value statements. And that's an ongoing project. So more to come in the future. Was talking to Mike Guardioso. He was talking about a, an interest they had in, at the board of commissioners level to review the Delaware County SADO and compare that and contrast that with our current ordinance and make a decision as to whether the ordinance needed to be improved or expanded or possibly we could modify it or adopt the Delaware County SADO. What they're going to do is I think, Alex, your, your firm's been working on a, I believe, a summary sheet to try to provide us with some additional information.
We're going to have a group call tomorrow to go over there's that item. And I think, yeah, we're going to, I think we're going to start off with maybe trying to just try to give you a lot of items that we think should be topics to maybe consider adding. I think a lot of you are going to be able to give us some good feedback as far as what you felt were like sticking points of where we were hoping maybe we can get the applicant to do something in the interest of the community. And yet the ordinance didn't have any, any teeth to try to help push that. So I'm sure everybody will have some good input to try to, in fact, you know, even, even when you're looking at tonight's sketch plan, you know, just, just the fact that we, we don't really have that much teeth to try to help, you know, maybe enforce getting a public street through there per se, you know, it's, he, he doesn't have to give anything for that frontage to that property that's landlocked and, and you got multiple flag lots. So, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of things we could maybe try to help improve. So it would be, it'll be good, good to talk about that over the next few months, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Each of you should have, if you want, well, you should have an electronic copy of the Delaware County SADO, it was probably emailed to you. And you have a copy of the ordinance. If you, if you want a hard copy of the, of the Delaware County SADO, I'm, I'm sure Barbara could accommodate you, Barb?
Yes, if they want a hard copy, just ask me.
And, and just so you know, in case you haven't breezed, breezed through it, it's only 170 some pages long, so.
Yeah.
But a lot of it's just exhibits and things like that. It's, it's really, I mean, it is, it is long, but it does provide a heck of a lot more information, stated procedures and things like that that are, are updated. And I think that's one of the other things, even if we don't move into adopting Delaware County SADO, there'd be opportunities there to modify or improve upon our current ordinance. So we'll see how that works out. But I'm looking forward to getting the, the discussion going with, 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 with Mike and, and the board and with, with Alex, et cetera, and see what we can do with that. Let's move into other to, other topics if we could. And I think one of the things I'd like to bring up is that we, in welcoming Joe and Cindy, we also, also, at least I would like to be able to formally recognize Pam and Jim for their service. And unfortunately, we're still doing this virtual presentations. I'd rather do something in person, but I don't want to put it off till 2022. So I, I think that we ought to form a little, little committee here to see if we can come up with a plaque or, or some other form of recognition for them, for their service. Jim, both Jim and Pam had several years of service and for the new people on, you know, they were both excellent, excellent members of the, of the board. And it would be nice if we took the time to acknowledge that they, they just didn't come in and serve their purposes and, and they're going on their way. You know, I think that they should be recognized for, for contributing to the township.
Yeah, we could mask up in social business.
You know, so something like that during, you know, maybe somebody has some ideas what we might be able to do, you might want to pour them into, to Barbara. We can put some kind of email together with some suggestions and send them out to you for comment. And maybe by the time the next meeting rolls around, we'll have some kind of way of recognizing them.
Sounds good.
Go around the table here, if we will. Anything else you want to discuss? Let's start with, with, on my screen, it's Joe. Joe, if you have anything you'd like to talk about as far as tonight or going forward, be happy to.
Uh, no, um, no, I don't have any additional comments. It was a good first meeting and I'm looking forward to being an asset to the team and to the, to the committee.
And now if you look at your screen, it's happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you.
If somebody wants to sing, that's fine, but you could just tum it to yourself, Joe.
28 today.
28, I can't remember back that far. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Happy 28.
Chuck? Comments, concerns?
I don't have anything additional to add.
Okay, Cindy?
I don't have any comments for tonight. I'm sure I'm going to have a lot of questions in the future. So appreciate your patience as I educate myself.
Trust me, those questions make us all smarter, so just keep them coming. And Greg?
Well, just I like the idea of, you know, celebrating the, the, the two old timers. And, you know, we can, we can socially distance someplace and mask up. I'm sure that's, well, hopefully it's okay with the, with the rest of the folks.
Well, there's a possibility next month that we might be able to return to the gymnasium or something and have our meeting there at socially distances. But I don't know if that's going to, to happen or not. It's been rumored that that might happen.
Yeah, and then, and finally, welcome Cindy and Joe.
Thank you.
Barbara, anything?
No, I just think we're going to have a really good year. We have a really good team of brand new people. We have more experienced people, we have Mike and Alex with us. So it's going to be a really fun, exciting and productive year. Happy New Year and be safe, everybody.
I agree. And finally, Michael.
You know, I just have to say, in my limited time with this board and this commission, I am very impressed with the way that you guys go about your job and how you're doing it in a professional fashion. I deal with a lot of boards and a lot of different things. And I truly believe that the questions that you guys ask, at least from my perspective and the limited time I've been here, have been for the betterment of the township and to try and make things right and try and do things the right way. You're obviously all very involved and, and you're up to date as to what's going on. And, and that makes a whole difference in the world. Not only you, you're very professional from the applicant's perspective, but at least they feel like they had a fair opportunity and a fair shake when they come before this board. And, and I can tell that each of you takes the job very seriously. And, and that's, I can't tell you how important that is. And I think you're doing a great job.
Michael, I appreciate that on behalf of the board. And I also appreciate the fact that you, you have, in my opinion anyway, added a lot to our, our ability to deal with things contemporaneously without having to check back and say, hey, we need to talk to the solicitor and see what kind of, and then you're hearing it secondhand, so we have to interpret what we think our question is. And, and with the, the party who is presenting the material and what their opinions were, with you being here, it kind of really shortcuts that and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. I think, I think it does streamline it and you're able to address some of the questions and concerns that arise with a little bit more of immediacy. As you said, rather than postponing things and going through it, we can at least get a preliminary answer and know where we're going from there. But, but you guys are doing a great job. Keep, keep up the good work, believe me, it's, it's noticeable, so.
Thank you and appreciate that very much. Well, Cindy and Joe, I hope you enjoyed yourself for the first meeting. You know, we've all been there, so it's, it's like an experience. Sometimes it's out of body and sometime it's what did I get myself into? Tonight was pretty good, it went pretty smoothly. So I appreciate you volunteering to come on board. And I know we're going to have a successful year and looking forward to having some real meaningful discussions going forward. So with that, if we will, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right, good night everyone.
Be safe, everybody.
And thank you, Barbara.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, bye bye.